Please join me in prayers. Dear God, today as the session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Gitchia. Counsel Janess.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Mercier.
Here.
Counsel Noon.
Here.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
Counsel Rourke.
Here.
Counsel Scott.
Here.
Counsel Yem.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Here.
Ten present one Zoom.
Any moment of silence or any memorials? Counsel Mercier.
Mr. Mayor, I would have done a moment of silence and duck in chamber for Maria Cozambulis-Lemay who passed away this morning, the co-owner of Captain John's, but it wouldn't do her justice. So if I could please wait till next Tuesday to do that, I would be honored. So thank you for letting me say that.
Counsel Mercier, anyone else has a moment of silence? Here, none. We now go to the, first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone here in the chamber to the meeting tonight. It's always good to see so many members of public who are engaged and involved with everything that's going on in the city. And also want to thank everyone who's watching at home tonight as well. We now take on the next item on the agenda, which is the mayor's business, 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation, Motion to Accept Place on File by Counselor Gitchia, second by Counselor Janess, on favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. The next item on the agenda, the presentation, and this is at the right time because we always value relationship with members and residents of the city with their home country. Tonight, I'm proud to ask Frue to come to the podium to talk about the Sister City anniversary. This is the 21st anniversary of Sister City with Lowell between Lowell and Bemenda. And this was started by former mayor, counselor, leader Mercier, the start is 21 years ago. And Frue, before I ask you to speak, to pretty much reintroduce the Sister City with Bemenda, myself and entire city council have, are in receipt of the letter from King Anguafu, the fourth of Mancon. We have this letter on file. And today, we are proud to present you the citation to honor and, you know, to commemorate the 21st anniversary of the Sister City between Lowell and Bemenda. I will present this citation to you, and I understand that you're here to say a few words as well. Mr. Frue?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, I wrote some few things down. I'd like to say, Honorable Mayor Sokachao, Honorable City Manager, City Councillors, citizens of our beautiful, wonderful city of Lowell. Greetings, we Cameroonian's of Lowell and sons and daughters of Africa now call Lowell home. I hear at the behest of King Anguafu IV, ruler of the Mancon people in Bemenda, an honorary member of this noble council since November 2002. As you all may already know, King Anguafu IV, his successor, a successor to King Anguafu III, who visited this city council 20 years ago, and thereafter, the council signed a Sister City agreement between Lowell and Bemenda. While it may be unfortunate that he did not leave to see the 20th anniversary of this historic event, it is however fortunate that his hair is there to provide continuity. Like, like his father, King Anguafu IV is passionate, is passionate about Bemenda, Sister City with Lowell. This passion can be seen in the letter he wrote to the people of Lowell through the mayor. In a minute or two, Mayor Chow will be reading the letter to you. Before I get back to my seat, I would like to use this to congratulate all our newly-elected members of the city council. The campaign were, as usual, well-run, and the victories were all well-deserved. As in the past, Lowell again proved to the world that in matters of democratic governance is that city on the hill. Cameroonian's of Lowell and all the sons and daughters of Africa that now call Lowell home, join me in wishing you all Merry Christmas and a very, very prosperous New Year. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any, any comments by any of the councillors? Here, none. I'd like to read this, this, Counsel Mercier, was you gonna say something?
I was gonna say that when, many years ago, in 2002, when the King Aguafu came to the city, it was just unbelievable. It was quite a majestic happening. We got that chair right there behind you, and we put it on the, on the floor here, and we, they put like a, an animal skin down on, in front of him, and it was just amazing. And it, I felt like I was in Bemenda, so it was just tremendous. So I'll never forget his visit. And then a few years after that, he came back again, and so I'll never forget that. And it's like you gave gifts to everybody here, and I felt like it was Christmas. And I came by the corridor, and I saw the entourage in the mayor's reception room, and King Aguafu said, "I will," I thought he said, "address you," which I thought he was gonna address us. He said, "I am going to dress you." So he put, took, they, the woman that were with him took off my jacket and put on the whole, you know, the dress of Bemenda. It was unbelievable, so I'll never forget that. So Lowell is a great city with so many different roots and so many different dialects and people of different nationalities. And Frue has brought up his country to us, because we'll never probably ever go to Bemenda, but it's just so wonderful. So thank you, Frue, for all that you've done for the city.
Mr. Mayor, this word came from the palace to, to present to Lowell.
Thank you. Okay, please come forward. We're happy to accept that. Thank you, Frue, for continuing to make sure that our city is diverse. We will put the letter from the king on file for the public to view for, permanently. I just want to summarize this letter real quick. This is the letter from King Aguafu IV, thanking former mayor, former city manager, the current council, the current city manager for this relationship. Let me just read briefly the last paragraph, because this is very, very meaningful. The letter states, "I am proud, very proud of the relationship that you and my father met, wife on the hallways of Lowell City Hall in 2002, and there is no better time for me to express such pride than on the 21st anniversary of the relationship. The Bemenda Lowell Sister City relationship is now mature. When twin cities attain maturity, what do they do? They celebrate. Given the various domestic and geopolitical crisis that currently riddle our war, our world, it is obvious that we cannot physically come together and celebrate. This, however, should not deter us from celebrating in our hearts and reflecting on where and how we can collectively take this relationship to the next level. This is what my father, King Anguafu III, would want, and this is what everyone who was present in the hallway of Lowell City Hall would want, that we take the Bemenda Lowell City relationship to the next level. Happy 21st anniversary to everyone in Bemenda and everyone in the city of Lowell." Thank you so much, once again. Now I need a motion to accept this presentation tonight, a motion by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Scott, on favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. The next item on the agenda is the city clerk. We do have a few minutes before seven o'clock, a public hearing. The city clerk, 3.1, minutes of city council, meeting November 21st, for acceptance. If there are no comments or questions, motion to accept by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Leahy, on favor, say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. We do have a few minutes before the seven o'clock public hearing. Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and take item 6.8 out of order. As I know, many people in the chamber are here to hear this issue, and there is one person who's going to speak on it.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Janess to take item 6.8 out of order, second by Counselor Noon, 6.8, it's a joint motion by Counselor Janess, Counselor Noon, Counselor Leahy, Counselor Drinkwater, request city manager have proper department provide report on best practices for adding censure of a member to the city council rules. Mr. Clerk, do we have a, let's just speak on this?
Good evening. My name is Debbie Belanger, and I live at 65 La Plume Avenue in Lowell, Massachusetts. I am a lifelong resident of Lowell, and today is a very sad day for me to have to come in front of the council to have, to speak to this motion. We are pleased to see the council's motion regarding best practices for adding censure and coming up with a procedure for vacant council seats. We also hope the council includes standards of contact, conduct for council members to adhere to, thus being the reason for censure. We believe this is a time sense, this is time-sensitive and should be prioritized to have these in place as soon as practicable. In solidarity today, we stand in the people's chambers to say that if an elected official violates the dignity and decorum expected of their position, we want a mechanism in place for addressing said violations in addition to and not in substitution of any other remedies that may be available by law. While there aren't council rules in place to govern regarding censure, procedures for vacant seats, and standards of conduct, we expect our elected officials to be held to a higher standard than the everyday citizen. We want our elected officials to act honestly, conscientiously, reasonably, and in good faith at all times in regards to their responsibilities and interests of the city and the welfare of the residents. We want our elected officials to refrain from communicating or acting, or acting disrespectful, abusive, and/or threatening manner toward anyone. We choose to not enable that behavior we believe is unbecoming of an elected official. The motion regarding censure and the idea of creating a standard of conduct for councillors should include that at a bare minimum, an elected official must show and demonstrate respect for law and order and for the public he or she serves. We should never have, we should never have to accept behavior from our elected officials that we would not accept from our friends or our family. I have a 13-year-old, and I have these three, four-year-old granddaughters. I want a world for them where they feel safe, where they are free from words or acts of violence. I want them to feel empowered within themselves, but also know that they should always consider others, and that the decisions we all make should be for the common good. I want them to be proud of where they come from, but most proud to stand for what's right, even when that is not comfortable or not unanimously supported. When you are an elected official, you represent, you represent your neighborhood, yes, but you also represent the city as a whole, especially since you are voting on citywide policies, and you represent the city to dignitaries and others who visit the city. We would ask that part of the censure code also include that, at the very least, if a council member is arrested for a crime, especially if they were deemed a danger to others, that they be required to step aside and not bring further distraction into this chamber. It is indeed time to think of the good and progress for all in Lowell. It is time to think of what be best for something that is larger than one person. It is time to think of the city as a whole. We believe Mr. Robinson should resign.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any other, let's just speak?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
More the poll councillors in this motion, who would like to go first on the make of the motion? Counsel Janess, Counsel Noon, Counsel Leahy, or Drinkwater? Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you to the speaker and everyone who came down to support. It's moving to see so many people in the chamber. I think the motion mainly speaks for itself. Censure is something that exists in many boards, committees, the House of Representatives, the Senate. You know, this is a fairly common thing for legislative bodies like us, and I think it's time we look at the best way to incorporate this in our city, in our city council rules so that we can, we can, we can use it when we need to. That's it. Thank you.
Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone here in this room, especially Debbie Belanger. She set a great example for her grandchildren. Issue of domestic violence, we all agree that is very grave one, it's very serious Having policies, having censures in places, we must be accountable, not only for a policy decision, but only, but also our personal conduct, especially concerning matters of serious as domestic violence. Having that in place, you know, council did, you know, understand, respect that the principle, innocent until proven guilty. That said, there's a need, you know, for us to, you know, step aside while the rest of the city are conducting business. Not to say right or wrong at this, at this point, because the proceeding is still pending. I know that this is not about one councillor, this is about this body as a whole. Going forward as well, we need to have it in place. Conduct and becoming an elected official need to be answers to. So I'm happy to join my colleague in filing these motions and asking the law department to look, you know, into other city and town that has similar code of conduct and censures in place as soon as possible so that we can assure the city that we deserve their respect. We will be accountable for what we do as an elected official, whether that be in private or in public. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the speakers, the speaker, the support group that came down tonight. And I think, yes, this is a very serious issue. We do need to have a code of conduct here in the chambers, and I couldn't have said it any better than my colleagues and the speaker, and I appreciate the support of everyone that came down today. Thank you.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also like to thank the speaker, Ms. Belanger, as well as everyone else who came out tonight to support this motion. There's not much more I can add, but to put it very simply, there oftentimes, maybe not oftentimes, there sometimes comes situations when we can all agree something violates moral unethical behavior. Currently, this council does not have any recourse to address situations like that. This motion is very simple, to provide the city council a course of action when we can all agree that there's been a violation of moral and ethical behavior as exists in other government bodies. I'll be voting yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? There's not, I'd like to make a brief comment here as well. At this point, I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Gitchia to come to the podium, so I may make Statement in support of this motion, as well, as mayor, one of my greatest responsibilities is to ensure the safety of all the residents of the city of Lowell. Along with local nonprofits, our police department has specially trained personnel who can be trusted help to those of you who are in victims of domestic abuse. If you do not feel safe in your own home, please don't hesitate to call the Lowell Police Department. Alternate House is an outstanding local organization that offers a full range of services for anyone dealing with threats and abuse in their home. They offer child services too, for parents who seek safety for the entire family. It is essential that the city council send a clear message that victims of domestic violence will be hurt by all levels of Lowell City Government, and that abusers will not be tolerated, no matter what positions they hold. It is that goal in mind that I will support the motion on the floor and the sentiments of the speaker here tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, and Speaker for sharing her thoughts. I will just request a roll call vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. At this point, we have motion for roll call to second it. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
It is approached seven o'clock now. We now go to a public hearing on item 4.1, the general public hearing, 4.1. I'm gonna take about 30 seconds or a minute if anybody would like to leave the chamber Okay, this is the general public hearing part 4.1. Vote, MRF, vote fiscal year 2024. On this item is to adopt the minimum residential factor of 0.895% for fiscal year 2024, which will shift the share of the levy to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. This portion is now open to all those who are in favor, open to all those who are in favor. Here, none, that portion is now closed. We are now open to all those who oppose, open to all those who oppose. Here, none, that portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the council? Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious if the CFO would mind taking a minute just to educate the public and all of us. of us on what exactly we're looking to do here. Thank you.
Through Mr. Manager to the CFO.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. To the council and to the public at home, this vote this evening to approve the minimum residential factor represents the minimum residential factor, or MRF, represents the percentage of the tax levy to be paid by the residential properties in the city, once calculated by the Board of Assessors and the Chief Assessor is here with us this evening, the vote presented to the council for approval after a public hearing. Approval of the MRF ensures that the maximum tax relief to Lowell's residents allowable under the law. That is governed by Chapter 200 of the general laws, and it allows certain communities to use a CIP, Commercial Industrial Personal Property Class, shift of up to 1.75 or 175% with specified conditions. So the vote that the council is being presented with this evening would shift to the maximum extent under the law, the tax burden away from the residential class. This is a vote that has been presented to the council each year since the adoption of Proposition 2 and 1/2. It is the recommendation of the administration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have this evening. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by any of the council? Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Noon. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Gishir?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Ten yeses.
The next public hearing item is 4.2. Ordinance amend Chapter 227, 227 by adding new Article 3. We don't have anything, no additional information, Mr. Clerk?
No, no.
This portion is now open to all in favor. Open to all those in favor. Hear none. This portion is now closed. We are now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. Seeing no hands, this portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the council? Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Commercial Property Vacancy Registration Program, and we are amending Chapter 227 by adding Article 3. This is excellent work, if you read this, and much-needed verbiage that I believe is well overdue. Do we have similar verbiage for residential property? Do we have? This is a commercial industrial.
Mr. Manager? Through Mr. Manager to Deputy Director.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a similar program to essentially a program the city created for foreclosure property registration. Essentially, the idea being that, you know, you need to register the property, you have to inform the city, register their property, and then keep us informed about plans to sort of take that from foreclosure vacancy and bring it into production. So it's slightly different, given that it's specifically for commercial space, but the idea of it did kind of stem from, and we copied this similar setup and style to the homeownership, the existing foreclosure program.
Now, many years ago, when Peter Richards, Eileen Donahue, and myself first became city councilors, I remember this big campaign they had was to say that every property in this city had to have an address of the owner. And not only did they need the address of the owner, because people own property here, but they could live in Dallas, Texas. Having said that, because they lived out of state, they had to have a person within a radius of this city to be on the property, to have their name and address and phone number associated with the property, so if anything happened to the property and we couldn't reach the guy in Arizona or Texas or whatever, we called that person. Is that in existence still? Because it seems like sometimes we don't know who the owner is, or this, that, or the other. And that's unacceptable, because we went through great lengths to make that possible happen, to make that happen. When we have a house on any street in this city that is being derelictly, you know, made in disrepair, it's not fair to the other homeowners around. And then when we ask, who's the owner, and no one seems to know, we can't contact anybody, that's not right. Do you hear what I'm saying? So that's important that we know that that's in existence still. Do you hear that? Having said that, there is a house, and it's number 318 Andover Street, that the city is constantly having DPW go down and cut the trees, cut the branches, cut the grass, do this, do that. And I'm sure that we're putting a lien against the property, but it's been vacant, and that's an entranceway into, a gateway into the city. And to look at that property day after day, year after year, I don't understand how that happens to... So if you could have someone, Mr. Manager, look into that property and see what can we do? Because I know that it's vacant. I know that shingles are falling off the building. I know that it could be sold or whatever. And it breaks my heart if someone's in a nursing home. It breaks my heart. I'd be there one day myself, but it isn't fair. Some family could be living in there and have a place to stay and keep it up. And I've done this before to other properties in the city that were in disrepair, and now they're livable, they're so beautiful. I could name you five of them right off the bat. So if we could do something with this property, and I just had to say these things, thank you so much. Thank you. So this is a good, this is good, this motion.
Through Mr. Manager, Assistant Manager, Mr. Machado would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're familiar with that property. That property has several fines on it. It was on the tax title list as well, but we'll look into it, see where it's at. I think the problem with that one was it was in probate, and we had trouble figuring out who the owner is, but I'm very familiar with that property, and it's been a eyesore for a long time.
Yeah.
And this is different, we're trying to get businesses downtown as opposed to the residential vacant and foreclosure.
Sure.
But that's something we'll definitely look into and catch one up to.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say thank you to the administration for all the work on this. I'm excited to be able to support this tonight, and I think it's an important part of trying to reactivate some of the space that we've struggled to activate over the years. I did have a couple of questions in relation to the rollout of this. How are we going to be reaching out to the property owners to make sure they're aware of this? And, you know, what's the timeline look like in terms of when we're actually going to get serious with this? Thank you.
Through the City Manager to Deputy Director.
Thank you, Mayor. So we initially started this several months ago. One of the first things that we did after drafting a version of the ordinance that you have in front of you today was to actually send it out to property owners directly. We did a direct mailing to property owners, letting them know that this program was coming, letting them know that our target, as we roll it out initially, for the registration was going to be limited to downtown, just trying to sort of put some reasonable metrics around how we're rolling this out. So we envision that we will kind of do it in stages, with downtown being the first sort of stage. We also invited property owners into City Hall for meetings with us, with the manager's office, with the team from Economic Development, so we could answer questions. We did have several property owners come to the meeting. Not surprisingly, a lot of them have activated spaces, and we're really excited about it. And so I think we got some positive feedback during that meeting. In addition to that, our Economic Development Team, Ally Carter, our Director of Economic Development, has been hard at work doing a number of one-on-one meetings, either just with Economic Development or with Economic Development and the City Manager, to directly do this one-on-one outreach to roll it out to people. So I feel like we've done quite a lot to let people know this was coming in anticipation of an ordinance actually being passed, so people weren't taken by surprise. In addition to that, as I said, we have anticipated that this is going to be a sort of phased-out rollout, with downtown being the first spot, because it's one of the locations where we've had a lot of issues of chronic vacancy. Some of our neighborhood business districts have actually been able to turn over vacancies within their districts much quicker than we see in downtown. And so we thought focusing initially this rollout on downtown was a good place to start. So we're, with the passage of this, will essentially do another follow-up in writing with property owners, letting them know that this is happening, and inviting people in if they have questions about exactly how this process is going to work. Thankfully, this is a project that is very similar to one that Ally actually worked on in Arlington prior to working here in the city of Lowell. So she's very familiar with lessons learned of that rollout, and so I think we're lucky that we're going to benefit from her experience on that, and we're looking forward to really hitting the ground with this in the new year, and hopefully, you know, creating a metric by which we can know who owns these properties, have a better understanding of what their plans are, and also to give people the opportunity to come to talk to Economic Development about the wealth of incentive programs and grant programs that we have available to help people fill their spaces.
That's great. Thank you so much for all that information. Like I said, really excited about this. Is there any way that we could get maybe a report back in, say, a quarter? Just to understand how many properties have been registered at this point and what they look like, just so the council's kept in the loop. Thank you.
A couple other council will like to make a comment before I ask the manager to comment to all. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I heard of this, I know the manager have this in a pipeline for some time. We talked about it. The idea of, you know, addressed issues of chronic vacancies in downtown, and this approach is carrot and stick approach. We work with you one-on-one or as group. We help you looking for funding, looking for resources to fix the upper floor, right? That will create, in turn, create foot traffic to help all this business that the city has been helping for some time. Because of the lack of foot traffic, they oftentimes will not last long enough. So this idea of having, you know, hey, look, come, we help you, one-on-one, a group meeting to see what we can do to help you, looking for resource to fix the upper floor. However, if you do not do that, you want it to stay vacancy, we will go after you with the developmental service, with inspections and whatnot that need to be done. So this is a great project, a great ordinance. This is something that we've been waiting for, for some time. Also, this is not something that, you know, we just created. This is something that, as the Assistant Manager's Jawani Biros has indicated, the individual that in charge of downtown, Ally, this is the best practice. It's been happened in Arlington already. We implement this and hoping that you will report to us on this and see how, you know, how far we go, maybe in five months or six months down the road. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by any of the counselors? Hear none. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three to the council. Counsel, thank you very much on the carrot-stick approach, because we want to make sure that every business downtown, as well as throughout the city, knows this, that our DPD, and I want to say thank you very much for all the hard work of our Assistant City Manager and Ally Carter and the whole gang over there, because we do have a booklet that is readily available, and that's the carrot approach, saying that we're trying to assist you, trying to help you, but the stick unfortunately may be needed. We're looking at what we've accomplished over on 51 Market Street, and I invite everybody to stop by, which is our pop-up, which the Assistant City Manager spoke about today. Mill City Mercantile and the Merrimack Company just opened a week and a half ago, I want to say, about 10 days ago, and they've been doing very well. Our goal is to make sure that those pop-ups can grow into areas throughout the downtown, and using that, once again, that carrot approach. Please, if you know any of the constituents down there, or if any of the business owners are listening, please give us a call, because this is a booklet that we will give you, that we have readily available, to find out what type of monies we can give to you to help you start your business, help you keep your business. There's a whole host of things that we can do. So once again, thank you very much, and this is something that we've been working on, obviously, for about approximately the last, about the last year. And it was mirrored, Counselor Mercier, on exactly what we've done in the past, and of course, the expertise that Ms. Carter has. So this could be an interesting time. We're also still working with the Lowell Plan to work on the second floor, whether it be with hoods, fans, and elevators. So that is something that is still a work in progress, where financing could be available through the Lowell Plan, which would be monies that would be provided by this city council, this administration, to make that happen. So there's a lot of exciting things happening, and I thank all the questions, because this could really be the turning of something great for our, not just our downtown, but our business districts outside of this area. But we're just figured we'd start to concentrate in one area and try to prove the theory that we believe is going to work. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by any of the council members? Hear none. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Scott. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Gishir?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Mayor Chow? Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Ten yeses.
The next public hearing item is 4.3. Ordinance amend Chapter 56 by adding Article 6. This portion is now open to all those who are in favor. Open to all those who are in favor. Hear none. That portion is now closed. We are now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. Hear none. That portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the counselors? Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I just want to say thank you to the administration. Happy to see this moving forward and look forward to putting it in place. Thank you.
No other comments? Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Gishir? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Gishir?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Mayor Chow? Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Ten yeses.
The next items for public hearing are the utility items. 5.1, Boston Gas DBA National Grid, request installation of 280-foot, 4-inch plastic main on Canal Street from Jackson Street to Middlesex Street. This portion is now open to all those who are in favor.
Mr. Mayor, Representative from National Grid on Zoom.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Curtis Davis, representing National Grid tonight.
Any questions for the representative? Counselor Gishir?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. A question, when is this work scheduled to be done?
It's currently not scheduled yet, sir. Pending the grant allocation hearing, we'll be speaking with Ting Chang's office about scheduling into the work, the winter moratorium, hopefully.
So are we looking to do this after the April 15 deadline? Are you looking to do this during the winter months?
We were hoping to see if it was possible to gain an exception to work during the winter moratorium.
Through the mayor to the manager. The manager has a...
Counselor Gishir? Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Counselor, this is for the garage over at, excuse me, the Hamilton Canal Garage in between Middlesex and Jackson Street, for the purposes of the needs that they have for the rooftop, as well as the, any of the first floors.
Thank you.
Any other comments for the representative? Counselor Leahy?
Well, not to the representative, but to the manager.
To the manager, okay.
Appropriate at this time or wait?
Yep.
Just, so I would like to see if we can take a motion to let them perform work during the winter. So do we do that after this or...
We can do that after this public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you.
Counselor Gishir?
I have just one more question through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, is that a newly paved section, or is that a section that will be paved later, after all the work is done down there?
That...
Mr. Manager?
Sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counsel, that I do not believe is a newly paved area, because that entire area needs to be done. The Jackson... The Jackson Street area that I think you're talking about, sir, is the one that is going down before the school, which was Milanova Lake, actually. This particular portion is just trying to wrap up the final steps of the garage, the newer garage there. Quite frankly, not too thrilled about it happening in this late of the season. And at this time, we're not looking to move through anything else other than emergency situations with any type of underground work.
My concern is that if this is a new portion that we just got done, that I wouldn't be in favor of doing this in the winter. But if it is a portion that's going to get redone anyway afterwards, there's not a major issue with it. I guess that's the only thing I'm concerned. We just got done paving down there, and we're looking at more cutouts. So, if it's a new piece, it's a piece that's going to be freshly paved anyway come summertime, I'm not in disagreement.
This is still in our favor section. Counselor Janess, any question to the manager?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yes, question for the manager is just, can we make sure that the contractor who does this work, whether it's National Grid themselves or if they outsource it, coordinates with the charter school? This street is critical to their bus operations for pickup and drop-off in the morning and the afternoons. So, if they show up and rip that street open without talking to the school, it's going to be a mess. And I just want to make sure they're included. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. We'll be talking to Mr. Davis if the council is okay with that at the end of this vote to ensure that coordination with the school happens, maybe even a Saturday or something to that effect. But we'll make sure we talk to Mr. Davis tomorrow about that, if the council wishes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, the portion of who in favor? Counselor Leahy?
Sure. I just want to make sure that I'm clear. If this work is going to get done now with the spring, let's just get it done now, get that garage open, so.
Any more comments or questions, others in favor? Here, none. That portion is now closed. This portion is now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. Here, none. That portion is now closed. Any other comments or questions by any of the councilor? Here, none. Need a motion to refer to Y Inspector for report and recommendation by Counselor Noon, seconded by Counselor Mercier. On favor, CI, post, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. The next line item for public hearing is 5.2, National Grid, request installation of underground electric conduit on Moore Street to improve service to Lowell Housing Authority. This portion is now open to all those who in favor? Open to all those who in favor? Here, none. That portion is now closed. Open to all those who oppose? Open to all those who oppose. That portion is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Counselor Getchier?
Again, going back to that, what timeframe is this planned to be done? Is this planned to be done in the winter, or is this something that can wait till the spring?
Mr. Manager, Mr. Clark, do we still have the representative on?
There is another representative for National Grid on.
Yes. Good evening, councilors. This is Sam Eng, National Grid. How you doing tonight? I, we don't have the job scheduled yet, but I would think it probably happened after the April 15 moratorium.
Was that after April 15? I didn't hear him. I'm sorry.
Hi, can you hear me?
Could we ask the representative to state that one more time? We have a problem hearing on audio here.
Yes, we're looking to probably install the conduit after the April 15 moratorium.
Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Again, I would just say that, you know, this service is the Lowell Housing Authority, and people there deserve, you know, improved service. So, if it's something that can be scheduled and done responsible during the winter, why not let people work and get the service improved? So, I would ask that we take that into consideration.
Counselor Leahy, I think I might have forgot to go back. You did mention, do you want to put that in form of motion?
Well, go to the Y Inspector for report and recommendations, so I'm sure they heard us.
Include that part of report, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Getchier?
As this council tries to improve the roads in this city, no community allows this unless it's emergencies. And even when they do, it doesn't become habit like this becomes forming as we sit here. If we are going to take a hotline and trying to create roads that are good for this city, they should start scheduling these things outside. There's no reason why it wasn't done before November 15 or after April 15. These are scheduling issues, and we should send a direct message to National Grid and Boston Gas that we do not want them digging up our roads during these times. And if you want to live with the potholes and everything afterwards, and the roads that are stretched and disrepair, that's fine. But they should be milling from one curb to another curb whenever they do winter work. And if they're not going to do that, then they shouldn't be digging in our city.
Any other comments or questions by any of the councilors? Here, none. Need a motion to refer to Y Inspector for report and recommendation by Counselor Rourke, seconded by Counselor Leahy. On favor, CI, post, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. The last item for public hearing tonight is 5.3, National Grid, request installation of underground electric conduit on Dome Street to improve service to Lowell Housing Authority. This portion is now open to all those in favor? Open to those in favor?
Yes, you know, we're in favor of installing conduit.
Yes, please, representative?
Lowell Housing...
I'm sorry, could I state it one more time?
Yeah, National Grid's in favor of installing this conduit for the Dome Street apartment, Lowell Housing Apartments there.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments on...
The same question. Is this something that would be done after April 15?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments on those in favor? Here, none. That portion is now closed. We're now open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. Here, none. That portion is now closed. Any common question by any of the councilors? Here, none. Need a motion to refer to Y Inspector for report and recommendation by Counselor Janess, seconded by Counselor Mercier. On favor, CI, post, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. We now reach the next sections, which are the city council motions. We now start with 6.1. Counselor Getchier, request city manager look into adding a left arrow to the existing signal located at Chelmsford Street and Industrial Avenue, heading west on Chelmsford Street towards Chelmsford. Second, seconded by Counselor Noon. Any common question, Counselor Getchier?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Mr. Manager, if you're coming up from, say, Lowes going towards Chelmsford on Chelmsford Street, and you want to take a left on Industrial where the 99 is, it's extremely hard. If you're coming the other way from Chelmsford and coming into Lowell, there is a designed arrow where you can actually get that right-of-way. But coming the other way, there's no arrow on the signalization piece. If there's an easy way to get this done, it would be very helpful for the neighborhood because it's extremely hard to take that left-hand turn. We were there over the weekend doing a boot drive for the firefighters, and, you know, an accident happens over there, and you can't even get a, you can't take that left-hand turn at all. So, if you can just look into that and just give us a report on it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Here, none. On favor, CI, post, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. The next motion is item 6.2. Counselor Getchier, request city manager update the city council on the Wi-Fi at the senior center, seconded by Counselor Mercier.
Mr. Mayor, if you could combine with Counselor Scott.
Counselor Scott?
6.4.
If you could bundle 6.4.
Okay, let me just take, motion by Counselor Scott to bundle 6.2. And what was the other item, Counselor Scott?
6.4.
6.2 and 6.4, seconded by Counselor Noon, and two motions, seconded by Counselor Mercier. I read 6.2 already, I'm going to read 6.4. Counselor Scott, request city manager provide a report on when the internet Wi-Fi will be restored to the senior center. Who would like to go first, Counselor Getchier?
We've received multiple calls on this issue, and I even spoke to Assistant City Manager Machado on this issue, and I was okay with what you gave me for information. But I just would like a report on, can we get it done sooner? Because, you know, as the elderly go in there, that's how they run their Wi-Fi, is off of someone else's network. And it's very important for them to have this up and running. So, the majority of people who called, that's what they were looking for. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Yes, I would just echo what Counselor Getchier said. They're concerned about not being able to use the YouTube for videos for their exercise classes when somebody's absent. They haven't been able to do that in months. And also to use the computers for programs. So, if we could move quickly on that, that would be excellent. Thank you.
Comments, Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a well-known fact that they do not have Wi-Fi at the senior center. At our last monthly meeting, they talked about that. It seems that the reasoning is that it's not secure enough. And I don't know what they mean by that, except for the fact that there was Wi-Fi there until the cyber attack, and then because of insecurity in the system, they're kind of afraid to put it back there. There are no laptops. The laptops were in conjunction with the Wi-Fi, and people could look on the laptops and get movies and through the Wi-Fi. So, it's not happening now. And I don't know why, once when they had it, and now they do not, I don't know what the situation is. So, this is a very good motion, and it is much anticipated. So, I don't know why we don't have it, but, and I don't know, did someone get a report that it would be there eventually? And now Counselor Getchier wants it there sooner? So, did we have somebody tell him that it was going to be there at such a time? When was that then? Because I don't know. I didn't hear that.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Councilors, once again, I don't like to try to do this, but just so the council knows, we do have hotspots and Wi-Fi over there currently right now, which is, you know, we're having this challenge even here in City Hall with Wi-Fi. We are in the process of re-architecting a new connection, not only for this building, but also for the building over in, at the senior center. But hotspots and Wi-Fi are over there currently right now, and it's a little bit confusing when you go, when you go there, you just don't, it doesn't automatically pop up. So, we are working through this, and security, council, you are correct, was an issue. It still is an issue. We're working through it. But it's my understanding, Counselor Scott, that the YouTube side of workout videos and things can be utilized now. That could change from moment to moment at any point in time. But hotspots and Wi-Fi are there until we get the architectural work done in regards to the new Wi-Fi coming into the building, as well as right here in City Hall. If anyone's here trying to get onto Wi-Fi, if you don't have your own, typically the city would have a guest Wi-Fi, correct? We don't have that right now. We're working towards that as well. But I will, we will get a report and an update on when that will happen. But just, please know that that hotspots are available. Sometimes I might lean on Counselor Janess a little bit more. Sometimes they need to be rebooted and whatnot. So, we are working towards a solution.
And since we're in the vicinity of the senior center, could we have a report as to what's going on with that bus? Because I'm hearing the bus is in perfect condition, and yet our seniors cannot go anywhere in it. So, if I could have a report as to what's going on with that? Because they keep asking me, and I don't want to keep telling them I don't know. Thank you.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand the frustrations with this, and I know that the senior center isn't the only building that's struggling City Hall. As you mentioned, it's also lacking public Wi-Fi. And I understand the infrastructure questions behind it. It's what I do every day. I don't have a great picture of what the city has for equipment and how things are set up and those kind of things. And it can get complicated, and I understand that. I'm wondering if we've reached out to Comcast and asked them about providing service in some of these buildings. I know they do it in other communities for the public. They obviously provide internet access. It's one of their core functions. And for someplace like the senior center, which, you know, is not overly huge, I would think they would be able to just drop one of their devices, that's a modem and a hotspot and everything in one, and get that up and running for the folks at the senior center to give them public Wi-Fi that isn't reliant on the rest of the city's infrastructure. I don't know if that's something we've explored or not, but it's worth asking the question. If there's anything I can do to help, please let me know. You know, I'm happy to shake some trees if that works. Thank you.
Any other comments or question on these two motions? That was seconded by Counselor Mercier. Here, none. On favor, CI, post, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. The next motion is 6.3. It's a motion by Counselor Getchier, request city manager update the city council on any heating issues in school buildings and/or municipal buildings with an expected timeframe for repairs. There we have a second, seconded by Counselor Janess. Counselor Getchier?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Mr. Manager, as we look through all of these heating issues, it would be nice in your update of the Pawtucket Memorial School in the information piece, it's clear when it says, as we look at the city's portfolio of buildings, there is a need to move forward with comprehensive planning to address the areas of deferred maintenance. What we're looking for is, we have no idea of some of this stuff that's going on, but we get the calls after the fact. If an AC unit is out in the winter and goes into the spring, and we're sitting here saying this, and then mold comes in and all the other issues that happen with these things, I would love to have some idea what's going on in these schools prior to getting calls from everybody else and then trying to go through the back door of all of this. And in our capital planning, I think that this is extremely important to have for long-term fixes. You know, you look at just the Rogers School, the, not Rogers, I'm sorry, up on the Hill Robinson, the Robinson School, we spent $1.1 million fixing the UN events. And it would be silly not to have a CFO that understands, okay, what is it that's going to go wrong? How old is this stuff? And how can we prepare to pay for these things going into the future? These are our buildings. So, that's really what we're looking, I'm looking for in this piece is, okay, what are the knowns that we have right now? And I don't want to hear from some teacher that this has been done for 12 years and we haven't taken a piece, because that's what we're hearing. And then we get a report that says, no, we did this, you know, eight years ago or six years ago, but the unit really never worked, and it's actually rusted together, the dampers. So, no matter what happens on the control end, we're not going to fix the unit itself. And obviously, we knew that going into the Robinson. And we know that going into the Pawtucket. So, now we're chasing our tail, where people are saying mold issues, mold issues. Well, it's an environment issue that grows mold. That's just the way the world works. And if you look at these pieces, if we can just have a comprehensive piece from each school, and we already have it from what we said, we already sent somebody out to get these things. So, what have we actually done? We had an air conditioning unit out in the winter going into the spring over at the Pawtucket. We just said it was rusted, and we didn't fix it. So, here we are, we threw 12 air conditioning units in a window. That's not going to take care of the issue. So, and I get for the short term, that's the way you would handle that, but I don't know that anything was ordered, or you even knew at that point. And that's the sad part, is that it comes to us, and then we got to go to you, and you go, oh, let me get back to you, when these things should be right on the forefront of the CFO's desk saying, here's our capital planning going forward, and here's what we're going to need, and here's how old these things are, and how do we replace them? how do we replace them? So that's really what we're looking for, is pieces on what are our major buildings right now that we're having major issues with, and how do we get to them right now? And is the funds there to help out with the environment within these buildings? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none on the favor of the Ay, opposed, they know the Ay's have it. Motion is carry. We already have taken up item 6.4. The next motion is 6.5. This is a motion by Councilor Scott. Request city manager have all open work order report shared with the municipal facilities subcommittee. Second by Councilor Leahy. Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to piggyback on what Councilor Gitchia just mentioned about the work orders and these staff, you know, complaining about these things going on for years and years. When I was on the school committee, there was a quarterly work order report that was provided to the school facility and the city facility subcommittees. Again, we don't manage the day-to-day of the city. That's not, you know, in our oversight. But it definitely is just another oversight tool, just like we receive the auditor's reports, to make sure that we don't have repeated work orders coming from the same buildings, you know, with the lack of heat, that the duplicates get cleaned up on the work order reports in a consistent manner. I know when we first got our first work order repair as a subcommittee, there were hundreds of duplicates on it. I don't know what the status is today. I'm sure, you know, I'm sure it's in much better condition than it was back then. And that things are closed when they're completed, and that we can see that there are not items that have been standing, staying out there for years and years. So that would be my request, that they receive a quarterly copy of all open work orders. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Hearing none on the favor of the Ay, opposed, they know the Ay's have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 6.6 by Councilor Yam. Councilor Yam is not present today, so we probably will put this, will put this for the next meeting. I understand there's a, Mr. Clerk, say a regent speaker on this one?
Yep.
Okay. Who's the regent speaker?
Tara Hong.
Mr. Hong, you want to speak tonight? You want to come back next week?
I'll speak tonight.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, who are in the chamber today, city manager, and everyone here at home. My name is Tara Hong. I live at 22 Canton Street in District 6. Tonight, as you know, I'm here to speak in support of Councilor Yam motion 6.6, and urge the city to take closer action. Personally, I have been around a lot in Lowell, especially in the Highland and Acre, and have encountered and seen a few things that I think the motion, this motion, a good place to start with. For example, Vala Street, next to UMass South Campus, should be well-drawn line for crossing and to the campus and also to the river at the park as well. There also should be more light for nighttime. As a driver, as a driver, it's actually hard to see at nighttime when people are crossing, especially students at nighttime. Around the Maury School, the second one, around the Maury School area, like A, B, C, D Street near Mayor Chow House, let's consider adding four-stop sign instead of two, that what we have right now. I think it can help with safety before accident happen. There's a lot of residents that sometime park their car close to the curve, and way up to the curve, which make it harder to see the ongoing traffic when you're on the stop side, the stop sign side of the street. Lastly, the instruction of Patuka Street and School Street need attention. The line, the crossing, the crosswalk line, the tidy of the tightest of the street, the street condition and the crosswalk sign need to look at to make sure it's safe for everyone who go through that intersection, because I see so many close call from accident happen. And I also want to concur with Councilor Gitchia, motion 6.1, that the Chancery Street also, that area that the council mentioned also need to look at as well. I know, I also, I'm sure that there are many other places around the city that need to be looked closely at. So I'm urged to city to make sure that every corner of our city be safe for everyone to travel and go places. Thank you.
This motion is put off to next week. The next motion is 6.7. A joint motion by Councilor Leahy and Councilor Janess. Request city council discuss and approve a procedure to fill a vacant council position open during the term. Who would like to go first? Councilor Leahy or Councilor Janess? Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we're looking for here is just a clear understanding of where we are right now in terms of our rules, MGL, everything else, and how that comes into play if there were to be an opening of one of the seats on this body. Whether it's an at-large seat or a district seat, you know, there may be a different answer depending on how that seat is, exists, and, you know, what the last election looked like may enter into it. I don't know. We have, going into the next term, we have a couple seats that are going to be held by folks who ran unopposed. So if one of those folks, if, you know, Mr. Leahy wins the lottery and retires to Florida, I don't know who becomes the District 3 representative. So before he takes off for the warm weather, I'd like to just have a little bit of a better idea, I guess.
Councilor Leahy, are you going to win the lottery?
You never know. Yes, we should just have a clear-cut understanding of what we're doing. I understand that there is a petition out the state house, trying to see where that is right now with Representative Howard and Elliott and Mom. But we should have our own clear-cut rules and what we're going to do for the future, especially, like we said, with this election, where District 3 and the Council Rourke's district, we didn't have opposition. So, you know, I don't know if the assistant city manager has an update for us on that. But, you know, we probably should, I don't remember what we sent down there, if it's a special election within 90 days. I think that's the way it should be now with the districts and the overall citywide seats. But we should see where that bill is and make sure we have a clear-cut understanding. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? This is going to trigger a report back. Councilors are going to have a further detail to discuss this. No other comments or questions on the favor of the Ay, opposed, they know the Ay's have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 6.8. We already have taken that up already. The next motion is 6.9. Councilor Janess, request city manager have proper department explore the possibility of creating an emergency winter shelter for single adults experiencing homelessness, similar to what the city of Worcester is doing with their former RMB space. Second by Councilor Leahy. Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I saw this in the news last week. Worcester approved creating an emergency winter shelter in the former RMB space. I'm not sure if that's still owned and controlled by the state, or if the city's taken over. I don't know who is responsible for that space now. But they've contracted with SMOCK to run a 60-bed emergency winter shelter through the winter to get people out of the cold. I don't know the funding mechanism behind it, but I was hoping to maybe understand how they're doing this a little better, and if we may have an opportunity to do something similar here in the city of Lowell as we go into the winter. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on these motions? Hearing none on the favor of the Ay, opposed, they know the Ay's have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 6.10. Councilor Janess, request city manager have proper department investigate and develop ways to increase security patrols in downtown garages. Second by Councilor Gitchia. Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, there's been an uptick of incidents in the garages, particularly the Saturday of City Lights. My understanding is there were some things that happened in some of the garages. And I continue to hear from residents and their frustration with the lack of security presence in the garage. I know that Laz continues to fight their staffing battles. But it's, there's a perceived issue, and it's nowhere, it's not the city's fault here, other than, you know, we issue the contract, and we're the ones who need to uphold it. But it's all the residents who suffer for this. Prior to this current contract, which went into effect in January 1 of 2022, there were two separate contracts. There was a contract for the operations of the garage, and there was a separate contract for the security of the garage. During that time, there was much more of a security presence than there is in the garages today. I don't know what we can do to get things back to be more secure like they used to be, more bodies on the ground, more folks walking around, making sure that things are the way they should be. But it's a situation that I continue to hear from my constituents about, and it's a struggle. So whatever we can do to make things better for everyone in the city, I know it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on these motions? Hearing none on the favor of the Ay, opposed, they know the Ay's have it. Motion is carry. The next motion is 6.11. A motion by Councilor Janess, request city manager have proper department investigate the feasibility of creating and adopt a drain program similar to other municipalities to have keep storm drains clear and provide report back to the council. Second by Councilor Mousia. Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something that I saw from a few other communities who created this program, which their DPW can work with residents. Residents can adopt a drain that's outside their house. And, you know, they're, they become responsible for cleaning it, if there's, if it's covered in leaves, sticks, that kind of stuff, to keep it free-flowing. Lots of, lots of cities allow people to name the drain, which is kind of fun. You get some, you know, Drainey McDrain face or something like that, that just, you know, provides an opportunity for people to be a little more invested in the area, and be able to give back in a structured way. And it also gives the folks at DPW, you know, a way to spread the work around. If, you know, we have a big storm, and there's a lot of flooding issues around, they can call up somebody and say, hey, your drain, can you just go check on that for us? And folks do that. And, you know, maybe this is something where we start in our non-CSO situations for public safety reasons. But I just think it's something that's worth looking at, that might, might be a popular thing that we could roll out with the residents. Thank you.
Councilor Leahy?
Do we get to rent the vacuum truck to clean out the drains if we adopt it?
Only if Councilor Leahy drives it.
Okay.
My recommendation for the first drain to be named, I would recommend, was it like "Insane in the Drain"? Last one. All right. No other, I'm assuming there's no other comment after that song, right? On the favor of the Ay, opposed, they know the Ay's have it. Motion is carry. All right. The next motion is 6.12.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Drinkwater?
I move that we table item number 6.12.
Motion by Councilor Drinkwater to move the table, second by Councilor Janess. A motion to table is non-debatable. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Could I have a point of personal?
It's non-debatable. We'll call this first. Mr. Clerk?
Councilor Gitchia?
No.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
No.
Councilor Newm?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
No.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yam?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Gitchia?
I understand the points that are going on.
You're asking for a personal point of privilege, Councilor?
Yeah, and that's sort of, I understand the point that's going on. But a lot of these deal directly with the city of Lowell in operations. 311, we all supported. I would love to have an update on that. I think that that helps the city move forward. So, I mean, if this is what we're going to do, then I don't think we're doing the city any justice either at this point, because these are important pieces that mean a lot to what we do as a function for the city. 311 is an important piece. But thank you.
Will I go back to where we left off on the motion? Motion 6.13.
Mr. Mayor, motion to table.
Motion by Councilor Janess, second by Councilor Leahy. Motion to table is non-debatable. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
No.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
No.
Councilor Newm?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
No.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yam?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
The next motion is motion 6.
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Was that Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
For the point of privilege, Councilor Robinson?
You skipped 6.12 to start. Then I'd also just like to notate, so it's on record, for those watching, again, these are issues with being in December. A lot of these motions are dealing with winter operations and preparedness and updates on that. So I would just like to notate that those that are tabling, I guess it's not a priority, and I hope those members at home that are watching pay attention. Thank you.
We already taken a motion. Councilor Leahy?
I just want to make a-
As well?
Well, I just want to make a mention and note on that, too, that, you know, some of the, some of the motions, the status of winter preparedness and where we are with the leaf removal, we don't need to know that. We have department heads that are capable of this. The manager's office is capable of this. They're doing a great job. This is not stuff that we need to meddle in. Thank you.
All right. Will I move on to the next line item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Scott?
6.14. Like to table that one.
Motion by Councilor Scott to table, second by-
Second.
Councilor Newm. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Gitchia?
No.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
No.
Councilor Newm?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
No.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Yam, excuse me. Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next motion is 6.15.
I'd like to table 6.15.
Motion by Councilor Newm to table 6.15. Do we have a second?
Yep.
Second by Councilor Leahy. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Gitchia?
No.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
No.
Councilor Newm?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
No.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yam?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Motion passes. With our last motions of evening, 6.16.
Your Honor?
Is it Councilor Leahy?
Motion to table.
Motion to table, Councilor Leahy, second by Councilor Janess. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilor Gitchia?
No.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
No.
Councilor Newm?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
No.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yam?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Mercier?
May I have a point of personal privilege? I think I'm slit my throat with what I'm going to say, but I have a right to speak. And if they want to kick my head in, it's fine.
Councilor Mercier?
I don't think there's anybody in this room, let alone this whole city or the United States, that is for domestic violence. I think there's nobody that I know that supports that. I certainly do not. I vehemently detest it. I know people that have been domestically abused. And I also know that people that were put in jail and were falsely accused. And I'm not judging anybody here, because I'm not a judge. But I feel that a person has rights, and these rights, to me, are violated, because until you go to court and you're proven guilty, then there's a, there's a judgment. I know that when a person makes out a police report, that is a police report of the victim. And I understand that, because I read about it, but I only heard one side. I didn't hear both sides. So I'm not making an opinion on what's going on here. But I think, and there's no thing, there's nothing on the books, no code of conduct that says, sent you this person. And this person came by way of Zoom. And everybody in this room is saying, you can't speak. That's democracy? I thought you were innocent until proven guilty. I don't know if everybody knew if you went to court and was found guilty. I think that's a disgrace. Now, I know there's people in this room that say, are listening, that are going to knock my head in. I don't care. It's about justice. And I don't think it was gone to court yet, at least. And I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. And I'm not saying I'm right, but it's my personal opinion. And I am not speaking on behalf of anybody but myself. And I'm not saying what happened was right, but I don't know what happened, because I wasn't there. And I think it's a disgrace that this person had the courage to come forward, even though by Zoom, and listened to the whole thing, and did not get a chance to speak. We don't have rules on the books yet. I don't know anybody that, and domestic violence happens to men as well as women. It's not just women that are abused. Men are abused, too. I try to be fair, justice. I'm a liberal. I try to balance the scale. I don't know who's at fault here. But until there's a court decision, and maybe I'm wrong, but this is my opinion, and that's what I'm saying. That's why I get involved in nothing, because I don't know the answer. But I think it's a disgrace that this man was not allowed to speak until he had his day in court. Now, I appreciate the fact that there's motions that say, well, in the future- Now, I appreciate the fact that there's motions that say, "Well, in the future, we're gonna do this." That's right. In the future, we should. We should have something on the books, but as of right now, we do not. That's why I didn't sign your petition or your thing that six people got together, because we have no right to censure. We have no right to be the judge and jury of someone that hasn't, I haven't heard that side. That's my opinion, I'm sorry if I'm wrong, but that's what I'm sticking with. Thank you.
Counsel Getchier?
Mr. Mayor, when we have meetings, we have rules. Massachusetts has rules about an open meeting law. And when you're staging outcomes for the majority, it's a violation of the open meeting law. When you have people sign on things and you call the majority of the councilors to sign on, it's a violation of the open meeting law. So we can't stage meetings here and just play actors with the majority of the council. We all understand that, and Mr. Solicitor understands that. We have an obligation to follow certain rules. And if people wanna talk about people's character and stuff like that, we have executive session for that. If people wanna talk things through, we have the executive session for that. We afford everybody that opportunity. I just don't understand why we're staging meetings prior to even coming here. Why do we have to do the people's work? It's just not right, and anybody at home can see that this was a staged moment.
Thank you. We now go where we left off, go back where we left on the agenda. Done completed motions already, we had section seven, communication from city manager. These are the motion responses. We'll start with the alphabet A on oppa funding proposals. Any comments or questions, Counsel Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna thanks the Mr. Flynn, oppa finance managers for the report. I'm very happy to see the report, the way of the oppa grant spread across the city, from small businesses, restaurants, nonprofit, art and cultural organization. I, one question I do have is that, because this is look really good, so the question is that, is this on the city website in term of who got what here? Mr. Manager?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Nune? The plan would be to actually post this after this meeting. We wanted to make sure that the council had the opportunity to speak on it, and if there were questions that needed to be answered, I would address those. But yes, we do plan on posting this to the website.
Thank you for your work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counsel Nune, thank you very much for bringing that up. I think this is gonna be a great opportunity for people to see, when you look through, I think, there's five or six pages here of folks who have been, I say, lucky enough to have that opportunity to receive some of this resiliency grant money. And I just wanna push everyone to the back of the back page. Some of the applications simply, although they were good, they were trying to do the best they could, but they ended up becoming ineligible just for reasons per the U.S. Treasury. So, Mr. Flynn, to you and your team, I wanna say thank you very much. I know how arduous this was, how difficult it was with so many great applications. But to the council, I wanna say thank you as well for loading up these silos of, from monies in the oppa, the oppa operation to help all of these different organizations. So thank you again, Mr. Flynn, to you and your team.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counsel Getchier?
I just wanna applaud Mr. Flynn also. I think that almost 50% of the people who even put in applications got an award, so that's a big piece. Just under 50. It's, and it's a substantial amount of money, and it's helped out a lot of people through some trying times. So I just wanna say thank you for even vetting through, and I know there's always gonna be somebody who thinks they should get it that we couldn't give it to. So I thank you in the end for putting this all together. It seems like when you look at it, it was, and we all voted on it anyway, so I think it's all equally distributed, you know, almost 50% of the people who applied got it, and I think that's important to outline. Thank you.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, just wanna say thank you to Mr. Flynn and his team. Scrolling through this list, it's really, you know, a hit list of everybody who contributes to making this city what it is. Businesses, nonprofits, cultural organizations, really across the board. And it's really exciting to see, and I'm so happy to see that this money is being put to work for our city, in our city. So thank you for this and look forward to seeing what all these folks can do with this cash. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Robinson?
Yes, I would like to thank Mr. Flynn. And one thing with, wrote all this, one thing that I'm very happy about that I've seen repeatedly through the upper process is something that we asked for early on. And it's to kind of streamline and make the process as doable as possible for your average business, your average resident. Because we've all seen in the past how grant opportunities, if you didn't have a dedicated team and you weren't a large-scale organization, it was kinda, any money that came around in the community was inaccessible. So I really applaud the ability of the city administration for finding a means and a mechanism to simplify the process, dot our i's and cross our t's, but still be able to distribute funds to those that need it for improvements in their business or whatever organization they're operating in. Thank you.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, one thing I forgot to ask is just, could you give us an idea in terms of where we are in terms of this money actually getting into the hands of these folks? I assume there's some kind of contracting process that has to happen before a check can be cut? Just kind of where we are in that process, just to understand. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So all of these grants, with the exception of a few, are reimbursement onlys. So we're setting up contracts that would allow the individual, the grantees, to be able to bill the city, and we would turn around and issue them an invoice. And it allows them to do it sort of on their timelines. We're trying to have all these paid by August of next year with this round of grant funding, although some will run longer. But in general, that's the program, and that's the way it's being set up.
Okay, thank you. So are we at a point now where folks can actually suspend this money with some kind of time horizon of knowing when they would be reimbursed, or is that, we're still working on that?
Most of them, up until the, there's another round of grants that I'll be talking about a little bit later, but all of the other grants prior have been issued, purchase orders and contracts have been issued, and people are actively getting funds already.
Great. Thank you very much.
No other comments or questions on this motion response? The next one is the alphabet B on shared financial burden. Any common question, Counsel Nune?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna thanks the Ms. Fitzpatrick for the report. I will take her suggestions, and for the next council meeting, I'm going to file a motion urging our delegations to support a motion similar to the New Hampshire. So, thank you.
Counsel Getchier?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Nune, can we file that right now? Just put it through as a motion right now?
We can file jointly together next council meeting.
All right, thank you.
No other comments? The next motion response on alphabet C, this is on Elm and Chapel Street. Counsel Janess or Counsel Scott, any comment? Who would like to go first? Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd really like to thank Ms. Altman and the team for taking a look at this intersection and, you know, seeing what we can do here. This is something I hear frequently about this particular intersection from the neighbors in the neighborhood. I know that the stats show that there haven't been a large amount of crashes, but my understanding is that there have been quite a few close calls that probably don't get recorded. You know, vehicle or vehicle pedestrian, lots of kids in the area who, you know, don't have much choice other than to play in the street. In Back Central, there's not a whole lot of open land to be playing in. So it is a concern of the neighbors, and having the report come back that, you know, we may not be able to do anything right now, I know is gonna be a disappointment to the neighbors. So I just ask at the minimum if we could prioritize getting the 25 mile an hour speed signs out across the city, particularly in the denser areas like Back Central, like Centerville. Because, you know, anything we can do to slow the cars down is gonna have a good effect. And then I don't know if there's anything we can do longer term in terms of monitoring this intersection with video cameras or maybe those mobile speed signs that the LPD has, just so we're, we can be really sure of the picture of what the traffic is actually doing at this intersection. Because, you know, the thing I hear time and time again is, it's only a matter of time until something terrible happens. So I just wanna make sure we're staying on top of this and keep it top of mind, and I appreciate sticking to standards and understanding the data. So the more data we can have to really back up our decisions, the better. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the manager. So, could I just ask why, if these traffic, the next three motion responses are all due to traffic? And it seem like they're answered by the assistant manager and not the traffic engineer? But the other question is, and I hate, I don't wanna be critical, but we want something done. We really don't wanna hear, "We're gonna look into it, we're gonna put this up later, we're gonna," we want something done. We have the traffic engineer, we waited a long time. You know, move a sign up. Lawrence Street, the next motion. Get the cars off the corner to the left. When you're coming down Moore Street and you're trying to pull out, you can't park to the left or the right, and it's mostly the left. But, you know, I think the answers we're looking for is, we're gonna start towing cars. We're gonna move the sign up 20 feet. We're gonna put that spot, that flashing light up. So I'm a little frustrated, but we'd just like to hear that we're gonna do this and not hear the response from Counsel Janess saying, you know, "In the future, we hope to do this." We really wanna get things done now. So that would be my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the council wants to do, but my opinion is we wanna start doing things now. Thank you.
Through Mr. Manager to the DPD Director?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, I inherited a template, but certainly all traffic-related things are answered by the transportation engineer. And Liz is the person sort of absolutely determining these things. I will give Liz a chance to say something, but I do just wanna clarify that in instances where either a stop sign or something specific that's requested may not be the best fit. It doesn't mean that Liz stops looking at this issue. This council did pass a neighborhood traffic calming policy earlier in the year, and so a number of the things that Liz looks at are specific requests that the councilors are making, but what else also might work? And so, you know, in these instances where some of the specific requests were asked aren't either meeting MUTC guidelines and we can move forward on them, there are, we aren't necessarily saying there's nothing we can do. It's just this particular thing that was requested might not work in this location. So, you know, there are, there are a number of potential alternatives. Some things like we rolled out on a temporary basis to see if they worked with the neighborhood are all still things that are on the table. Liz, I don't know if you wanna jump in with anything more specific?
Just with regard, if I may, the, with regard to specifically Elm and Chapel, we did get a grant that you all accepted last week to look at Back Central in its entirety for how we can improve traffic flow, safety for pedestrians and vehicles. So while this particular intersection, I can't, there's nothing I can do immediately that wouldn't directly impact a direct to butter to that intersection. There is a plan for a greater plan for that whole neighborhood to try and address the safety issues for pedestrians and vehicles in that, in that whole area.
Counsel Getchier?
No, go ahead first.
I just wanna be clear on a couple of things that were stated. I thank the traffic engineer. You know, when the manager puts a report forward from the police chief and the manager's in the top line, the police chief gave him the information just to put together the report. And it's clear that if you read these things, that the traffic engineer absolutely went out there, absolutely looked at everything, and gives you opinions based off of the rules that go on. There are many rules, there's traffic design rules, there's engineering rules. It's not like you just pull these things out of the sky. We had a motion earlier about stop lines and how far in front of crosswalks can you put them? We can't make it up because somebody feels there's more lighting down the street. It's four feet before a crosswalk, you can go. That's what the manual on traffic design states. She can't just make up where you're gonna put these things because someone feels comfortable with it. Normal places don't even put stop signs on post because they're not owned by the community. So, and there's certain heights and stuff. So when we look at this stuff, I applaud all the work that she's done, and she had to say some tough notes to people based off of engineering sciences in books. So I think it's fair if we do read this, you clearly can state the hard work that was put in, and I truly thank you for it, even though there are times that I don't agree with it. But, I mean, that's your job, is to make sure that we're following processes that keep us out of liability, and I thank you for that.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Here none. We now move on to the next motion response. This is alphabet D on Lawrence and Moore Street. Counsel Scott?
Thank you. I guess the only question I have is around what Counsel Leahy was just talking about, the left, what was originally the reason for me making the motion, it was brought to me by residents, how difficult it was to take a left-hand turn. Sorry, I'm losing my voice a little bit. Taking a left-hand turn out of Moore Street onto Lawrence. And I know myself, it is very difficult because of the bend in the road, the way, you know, the sightline is. So you do have in here that one remedy would be not having vehicles parked there. Is that something that you'd be recommending at this time? And I do understand that is something serious, it is a hardship for people that live there. But there is a park within a very, very close walking distance that has parking all the way around it. So there is an, there is an alternative, so I do think it is something that we should look at, even if it's on a trial basis, to see if that helps the situation.
Absolutely. I just wanted to make the, I'm sorry, if I may.
It's okay, yes.
Thank you.
I wanted to make the council aware that that would directly impact that of Butter's parking, that it's a multifamily home on that corner at 915 to 921 Lawrence Street. So I am, I wanted to make the council aware before I did it that that would directly impact that neighbor.
Yeah, and no, and I appreciate that, and I understand why you would put that in here so that they're aware of it. And I do take that seriously. Like I said, we have parking issues in many areas. I don't necessarily think this is an area that there is a large parking issue. I know people wanna park right in front of their house, but it's just, it is a safety issue there. So I would like to see us move forward with that, and that would just be my input on it. Thank you.
Perfect. And then this is also a really good location for an overhead flashing beacon that would be able to be seen kind of around that corner on the bridge. That is just a little bit longer term, a little more outlay.
And if, if you don't mind, just because we are talking about this specific intersection right now, it's also been brought to my attention, another tractor trailer bridged itself underneath the bridge in front of the cemetery. So I don't know if we can look at having, there was signage on the bridge. I don't think there's anything on it since they painted it all, they made it look really nice, but there's nothing like a flashing light or something on the bridge other than the signage right at Moore and Lawrence Street. You know, and I know once they get that far, it's kind of already, it's not too late, they turn around and Coleman Monument works, but if there was just even a flashing light on the bridge, I think it would help.
I'll check again, I'll check again, it's been a while.
Thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Yep, thank you. So if I can, to the traffic engineer, so we would be able to prevent parking, like, say, 20 feet at least from that corner?
We would probably wanna restrict it for about 100 feet, so the-
Okay, so why, so I just don't understand, why are we gonna do 100 feet when we just really normally only do 10 to 20 feet?
The state law is 20 feet from the corner.
Okay.
And so nobody should be parking within 20 feet of-
Right.
-of an intersection. In this particular case, the parked vehicles at the angle of the road, the extra cars along that side street, along that side of the road, of the road in front of the house, really block your ability to see to the left. And you have to pull out far enough that the bend in the road to the other direction, it really causes a lot of conflict. So what, if you remove those extra parking spaces and those vehicles, you'd have better sight distance for people both seeing, approaching the intersections on Lawrence Street and the people on Moore Street coming out.
All right.
So, you'd be able to see if somebody was trying to come out and pulled out in front of you.
No, I understand that. I'm just wondering, like, is there any play with this? Like, you couldn't compromise and just do 30 feet? But, I mean, these intersections too, also, the bridge, I was doing some work over on Barica Road, I mean, we could almost use something like what Counselor Mercy brought up years ago, was at the end of the connector and, and over at the end of Moore Street, you could almost use those rumble strips, you know, where they dig out part of the road so when you drive over it, your car vibrates. I mean, that would make more sense if the state or the city could adopt a program like that, and at these dangerous intersections, you hit these five or six rumble strips. And I'm very familiar with that intersection, and, I mean, yeah, it would be a burden to, to eliminate 100 feet of parking. That's why I would ask, you know, maybe, you know, maybe you can, maybe you can't, but you compromise and you do 50 feet. And, you know, I mean, there's not a lot of accidents, I guess, there, there's only about five, but I don't understand the, the sign, like, moving the sign up from the bridge, over the bridge, is that what you're saying?
Right, there's a standard distance that a warning sign would be typically placed to let somebody know that there's an intersection approaching.
Okay.
This, the sign, if you're approaching from the Chelmsford side of, you know, from the southern side.
Yeah.
That, that sign is before the bridge, so it's almost so far that you...
Right.
...forget, right? You see the sign, you're like, "Oh, there's a sign, oh, there's a, you know, an intersection coming up, great." And then you go over the bridge and you're like, "Where? Where?" You know, you've forgotten that, that the intersection is coming up. So, but the, you know, just because of the, where the bridge deck is, like, it's too close on one side and not too far on the other side.
And these are like state laws, though?
Right.
State regulations or...
Yeah, so that's, there's recommendations on the distance you should...
Because, I mean, the state, a few years ago, I don't want to beat this to death, but, you know, a few years ago, the state came out and put a warning sign of a stop sign, you know, 20, 30 feet before the stop sign. I, I'm thinking, why do you need to put up a warning sign 30 feet before the stop signs? But, they did that, so I wouldn't, I don't know why they wouldn't let you move the sign to the other side of the bridge to properly alert you. So, I don't know. Sometimes they just don't seem like they make...
We could, we could put a second one there, but it, again, it would be like right on top of the intersection, so it would...
But better than forgetting about it, that's, you know. All right, thank you.
Counselor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember we met over at Von Ammav early in the fall, a very similar situation. It was, it was the sightlines, correct?
Mm-hmm.
At that time, cars come around, there's no time to adjust or whatnot.
Right, at the, the, where the, we looked at the crosswalk.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Or potential crosswalk, yeah.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Here none. We now go to the next one, which is the alphabet E on Arcane and Merrimack Street. Any comment or question, Counselor Mosia?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Elizabeth, thank you so much for the report. This was a very good report. And having looked at what you said, a timing adjustment is probably all that's needed to allow traffic traveling up Arcane Drive to take that left on Merrimack Street, right on the side of the building over here, and give them a chance to proceed before the traffic is coming at you. Do you think that that could be possible, where you could adjust the light so that this side doesn't come up, but allows this left lane of traffic to go a little bit before the traffic starts coming right at you?
I think that this signal hasn't been looked at in a, in quite some time, and the traffic flows could be a lot different than the last time it was looked at.
Yeah.
So, we have retained a specific signal design engineer.
Mm-hmm.
And that firm is going to look at a number of our high-crash intersections that, for this type of thing. Can we just change a signal head to make it a left turn flat, you know, flashing left turn? You know, simple things like that, that can extend the life of a signal and make it operate better.
Yeah.
So, they have, I have a list of about 15 signals for them to look at, and this is one of them.
All right, oh, good. Thank you so much. It's worth looking at, because I think it's a little bit scary. I thought so, but a lot of people have told me that, and I said, "Oh, I feel the same way," yeah.
The, the pedestrian crossing time is not long enough.
Yes.
Things like that.
That's right.
We're, they're also going to look at the two on Dutton Street, Merrimack, Market and Broadway, too.
Good. Thank you, Elizabeth, thank you.
Any other comments? Here none. The, the next and last motion response is alphabet F on multi-purpose educational space for schools with any comments or questions. Counselor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Thank you, Manager Golden and CFO Baldwin, for putting this together. I, I think this is going to be really good if this works out. I know it's been a challenge to get people to bid in, but I, I do agree that if we can get this worked out, it has a major advantage for the residents of Pataqueville, also the schools, so it's a win-win piece. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Counselor, this RFP is still pending. We're excited to see what's going to happen, just like this council has been having this discussion, so we'll, I believe it's the 12th of December when, when we should have at least everything back before us, and then we can have a further discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, I, I guess for the CFO possibly, I don't know if you can answer this, but the space that we, the buildings that we want to move into this building, if this happens, the special education department, I believe is out in Chelmsford, the school that you're talking about, 80 School, the downtown offices, are we under a long-term lease agreement on either one of those properties right now?
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in, in the spaces that the school department is considering for moving, if there is a successful bidder with, that's responsive to the requirements, would be, as you mentioned, the, the 80-day school in Chelmsford where there is a lease, as well as the central office space in downtown Lowell where there is, is another lease. And so, the, the idea being that there would be some savings achieved by terminating those leases, and those funds could be directed back into programmatic areas.
Yeah, I guess I was asking, so they, there are not, it's not a long-term lease that we'd have to try to get out of or anything, is what I'm saying.
Mr. CFO?
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. The, the leases that they're in, I, I'm fairly certain that they're in an option year of an existing lease, so I, I don't, I guess, I don't know for certain, but I, I don't think there are many years left on the lease, but we can follow up with those, those details for the council.
Yeah, if you could find out the details, because it also mentions, you know, middle school space, which is something that they don't provide right now, I believe, at the 80 days, so I don't know if there's another school that would be opening, you know, moving into it as well. So, if you could find out the details, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? That completes all the motion responses. The following reports, informational reports on section 7.2 from the city manager. The first one is the information report on AWP facilities renovation and rehabilitation. Mr. Manager? Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So, there was a, a handout that should have been sitting on each of your desks that had a summary of the recipients of the facilities renovation and rehabilitation grant offering. As highlighted in the memo, this was a, a grant we had issued back in the spring. Received roughly 20 applications requesting $3.5 million in funding, and we had $2 million available. The committee had done the review of, embedded the different applications, and we've ultimately awarded seven grants out of this pool, of which are on the, the summer you have. The recipients are the House of Hope for $170,000, Girls Inc. of Greater Lowell for $100,000, Megan's House Foundation for $150,000, the Elliott Presbyterian Church for $33,000, the Massachusetts Alliance of Portuguese Speakers, $46,000, Lowell Transition, Transitional Living Center, $172,000, and the Center of Hope and Healing for $180,000, for a total of 851. We had a, a, sort of a, a session earlier before the meeting tonight, where we did like the large checks and brought everyone in and congratulated them, and we'll be working with these entities over the next several weeks to get the appropriate contracts in place, so then we can begin the process of funding them and helping them sort of make the improvements that they had requested in their applications.
Mr. Manager? Anything else to add?
Once again, through you, Mr. Mayor, through, to the council. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Flynn, again. I know we looked at these at, at quite, these are big ones...
Yes.
...to go through, but you and your staff are doing a fabulous job with this, and I thank you for all your hard work, and thank you again to the council, who did get a chance to make it, and understanding that all of these organizations, plus so many more, are very worthwhile. But, to you and your staff, thank you for making this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. No other comments from the councilors. The next information report is on fiscal year '24 Lowell MRF hearing presentation. Oh, you took this off already? Okay. The next report is on Pataqueville Memorial School. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Councilors, this is a pretty in-depth report in regards to one of the schools that has been in question. Trying to just follow up, as many of the councilors have talked about, that we, you know, what we've, what has been happening there, I'm going to say over the past eight months, that we're trying to chip away at this. So, I do have Ms. Moses and the commissioner here, just in the event that there are any questions about the Pataque, Pataqueville Memorial and what needs to be accomplished out there, and also taking into consideration the discussion that was brought forth by Counselor Gitcher earlier, we will be working on a school-by-school breakdown as to what has been happening in the past, actually, since this council has, has taken office in the past, I'll, I dare say, 24 months. We will have that breakdown, and we're hoping to have that, I'm going to say, in January, as to what exactly needs to be happening. So, this was just a breakdown, because I know that every council was, was calling. There are a lot of concerns here, but if there's any other further questions, I'm going to ask, ask you to direct them to me through the commissioner, as well as Ms. Moses. Thank you.
Any comments or questions by the councilors? Counselor Gitcher?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, in, in the memo, it says that 280 exhaust fans have been replaced. Were any of the exhaust fans at the Pataque replaced? Out of those 280?
All of the exhaust...
Through Mr. Manager to Mr. Paul St. Seir.
Apologies. All of the exhaust fans were changed there, Counselor.
Okay, so when I went there two weeks ago, when we were on the supply side of the cafeteria piece, that was tripped and the return was off. When I spoke to the custodian, I said, "How do we get this?", and he said, "All we do is just go up, click the supply side and get it up and running." Has that been repaired?
So, actually, parts are on order for that. They've actually been working on that, as they've been standing the controls up in that building, as well as the, the many other schools. So, we're expecting the mechanical contractor to be back there in the next couple of weeks to have that up.
So, when were those parts ordered?
Um, last week.
Okay, because they've been at this for a long time, they've been climbing that ladder and clicking and clicking, which to me is dangerous, any custodian doing this. First, you got to climb up a walk-up ladder to do that, and then it's not even getting any return, it's just getting supply. They, they click it on for supply and then they go. In your memo, you state that you knew the AC unit was down in the winter of 2023 and in the spring of 2023, because there was a part that was rusted, or it wasn't...
I'm not sure you saw that, Counselor. We had several items that were fixed during the winter and spring.
I'll find it, I'll provide it to you. But, is the air conditioning, and, and that's when you provided the 12 air conditioning units each room, right? Because the, the air conditioner wasn't working in the room, right?
Well, actually, that happened during the course of the summer, it was, it was in July that that part occurred. And we do know about the issue with the chiller at that building, they were, that's a two-circuit chiller, they were only able to get one circuit up, so it was basically limping along with the, the greater plan of, of coming back and replacing that chiller.
So, so here's the piece, it's right here. It says, "During the winter and spring of 2023, several repairs were made to field components of the ace, of the HVAC system, and an assessment of the Pataque School major equipment was completed. The school's AC system was inoperable. One of the two circuits on the roof top chiller was condemned. The second circuit was repaired, providing only limited cooling to the building."
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I just said, in, in the spring. So, did we fix the other one?
The other circuit? No, we're, we're looking to replace that chiller.
How soon before that would be done?
We've got, the lead time on them is, is greater than 30 weeks at this point, and it's, it's coming down to some of the funding sources that we're working on right now.
So, we don't have it ordered yet, because we don't have the funding source?
It's correct.
So, that, again, these are the problems that should have been outlined back when the mold issue was discovered. We should have been looking at, okay, we have all these things down, let's move these pieces forward, and, and I'm sure that the manager and his staff can find those funds to get that ordered, because you could have a delay time in getting one of those for up to 26 weeks, so do you know if there is one on that unit? If there will be one, a delay time when you order it?
I'm certain there will be.
So, we don't know, okay. You know, I do think we're starting to go in the right direction, but it takes councilors to go out to things, it takes moving pieces to get these things done, when you have school teachers who have been in there for a long period of time saying these things for a long time. You have unit vents that are rusted shut, and the dampers don't work, and they don't communicate, and it's not new. You know, teachers are going over and flipping switches where they shouldn't even be near the electrical of those components, and they're being told by HVAC staff from the city, "Oh, here's how you click this on and click it off." And when they're not there in the summertime, these buildings are sweating, and, you know, ceiling fans will keep the heat down, you know, and I don't want to go on hearsay from what they're saying, but I, I just think that, Mr. Manager, you have to get that AC unit, those chillers, up and running as soon as possible. So, when he's saying it's a funding source, that's the reason why, I mean, that, that's just not the excuse out, when, when we have the funding to do this, so hopefully, you get your purchase orders very shortly and we can get these things together, because it's not fair to anybody to be in that type of environment, when you can't cool a building or you can't heat a building, and, you know, one kid's wearing a jacket because they're freezing, and the other one is got no clothes on because it's 94 degrees in the, in the room. It's warm, it's cold, and then it comes back and forth, and, you know, I know that people are here shaking their head because we're talking about these things, but it's been too long. If it was any one of our children in there, it would have never been three months. And it's just, it, it's sad that these things are happening, and I know when I look over at certain people who have young children, they would never allow their children in this situation, so we need to get something done, and something done quick.
Counselor Leahy, then Counselor Mosia.
Thank you. And I agree with what Counselor Gitcher is saying, but I want to stress, too, that I think we finally have a team in place that understands this and is working to remedy this, too. So, I want to make sure that people understand, yes, we've had problems in the past, unfortunately, we had people in positions that didn't understand how to get this done, now we do. We need a little bit of patience to get the funding sources, to get the pieces coming in, and to get the, all the players in the right places, and I think we're making great strides finally, and I applaud the team that's in place now doing it. They don't need anybody to defend them, but I've been here a while myself, and I've seen it, and it's finally on the right track.
Counselor Mosia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I know that we were going to have a, a gathering of the school committee and the city council, December 7th at 6:30, to go to the Pataque Memorial School, but I understand that it was changed because of all the busy things that are happening on this, on Thursday. So, the meeting is Monday, December 11th at 6:30. Is that still on?
That's correct, Counselor.
So, if that is still on, and I already said that I'd be going, but I don't see why we're going if we don't have any answers and we're going to see the problems or whatever, so, Mr. Manager, through you to the city manager, would it be possible if someone like Paul St. Seir came with us to talk, or would, because...
I'd be happy to attend.
Would you think that you...
I'd be happy to attend.
Okay, well, so, so that, I don't know what to say when I go there, I'm just going to observe and things, maybe they have questions. I certainly don't know what a chiller or a whatever is, but I'm, but I would like I certainly don't know what a chiller or whatever is, but I would like to go and have someone with me that knows how to explain that. So I'm going to be there at 6:30 on Monday, December 11th. And Paul, you're coming with me, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Wouldn't miss it.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions on this report? Thank you, Mr. St. Seer, Ms. Moses. The next information report from the manager is update on the migrant situation. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the members. Today, obviously, being December 5th, we've had multiple meetings with the Lieutenant Governor's staff, as well as the organization that will be taking over the ICC. At this point, obviously, it being December 5th, and they were thinking about December 1st, people taking up residency at the ICC, that has not happened at this point in time. We're still looking for this to be happening sometime in mid-December. There is still a number of pieces of the puzzle to continue to move forward. I think, I believe I sent all the councilors just a brief update. Nothing thus far has changed, but I believe it's sometime before, before the end of this month, we'll have people coming in at 10 to 15 families at a time. Our Lowell Police Department has been in contact. They'll be going over and checking on some security. As I had stated in an email, brief email, just to the council, that security concerns are being taken care of by a private company. So everything right now is still status quo. We're 10-plus days away of something happening, but I will continue to keep you updated. But I was actually hoping to have more information between the last meeting that I had and today, and that's not the case. So in all of the conversations we've been having, council has been very interested, obviously, in finding out what would happen next. That's, I wish I had more to tell you right now. I was waiting for an update. That has not yet happened. So pushing until the 15th of December, maybe by next Tuesday, if it'd be okay with the council, if I put something similar on, maybe there'll be one more additional update that we can tell the council, as well as the public who is watching. But we have been watching this very closely. Our partners throughout, I can, I don't want to name just the Lowell Community Health Center, Lowell General Hospital, but our own, our own health department, HHS, we've been meeting on a fairly regular basis, I believe. Ms. Golden, we've met four times, I believe it is. We're going to be moving, meeting again, just to see that we can, you know, have a smooth transition. So if it's okay with the council, I'll try to update you next Tuesday on what will be happening. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer them, but I think you have all the answers that I have. Thank you.
Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Here none. That completes all the report.
Mr. Mayor, if you could bundle 7.3 to 7.5.
To bundle, okay. First, watching the motion to accept and place and file all the reports, Counselor Nune, second by Counselor Mosier, on favor of the I post in order, I have it, motions carry. Counselor Nune, motion to bundle 7.3 and 7.4, second by Counselor Drinkwater. 7.3 is communication, reappointment of Suzanne Fleschet to Library Board of Trustees. 7.4, communication appointment of Leonard Clark to Election Commission. Any comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Nune, second by Counselor Mosier. Mr. Clark, roll call, please.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mosier?
Yes.
Counselor Nune?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson? Counselor Robinson? Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem? Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Manager, any other individual present to be introduced? No individuals present. That completes the 7.3 and 7.4. 7.5 is communication, city manager requests out-of-state travel for one LPD. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Nune, second by Counselor Getchea. Mr. Clark, roll call, please.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mosier?
Yes.
Counselor Nune?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson? Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Your Honor?
Counselor Leahy?
Just quick clarification, through you to the manager. On an out-of-state travel like this, and I don't mean to be a wise guy, but like, should this be kind of kept quiet if it's an investigation? When they, if they're traveling for an investigation?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counsel, in regards to that, that's, it's pretty vague. That's purposely.
Well, it is vague, but it.
It's vague as to where, why, and how, and with who. But I thought it was pertinent for the council to know just the dates of what might, you know, what would be happening, but.
All right. I mean, you never know. People tip someone, hey?
You know, the travel reimbursement piece from the audit standpoint as well needs to be dated, but everything else is.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That completes that. Need a motion to bundle 8.1, 8.2, and 8.3 by Counselor Nune, second by Counselor Leahy. 8.1 is a vote authorization, manager conveyed 32 Union Street. 8.2, vote transfer 175,000, $218, Chapter 70 supplemental appropriation. 8.3, vote accept expend 33,000, $320, EMPG fiscal year 21 funds or fire. Any comments or question? Move to approve by Counselor Nune. Mr. Clark, roll call, please.
Give me a second on that, Counselor Nune.
Counselor Nune, second by Counselor Scott. Roll call, please.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mosier?
Yes.
Counselor Nune?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem? Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number nine, orders from the city manager. 9.1, order 60-day trial. Way full reading, second reading by title. Mr. Clark? In the city council order pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, concerning section 266-6. Is this the right one?
Yeah, that's. Sorry.
All right, Mr. Clark is going, shuffling through a lot of papers in his hands. Concerning section 266-6, they are entitled temporary experimental regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period up to 60 days. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Need a motion by Counselor Mosier, second by Counselor Drinkwater to adopt. Mr. Clark, roll call, please.
Counselor Getchea?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mosier?
Yes.
Counselor Nune?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem? Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 10, ordinance from city manager. 10.1, ordinance through aid, performance, surety deposit revolving fund. Any comments or questions from any of the councilors? Here none. Need a motion to refer to public hearing on January 2nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM by Counselor Mosier, second by Counselor Getchea, on favor of the I, post in order, I have it, motions carry.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Janess?
Pardon the newbie question here, but my understanding is that will be the day of our inauguration for the new term. Will we also have a meeting that evening?
We will, counselor. Counselor, inauguration's at 10:00, 10:00 in the forenoon and back at it that night.
All right, that's a lot of suit time for one day, but I'll take it.
Sorry about that.
Jesus, don't hurt yourself.
The next item is section 11. This is a report of subcommittee, the 11.1 Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee, meeting of December 5th, today, 2023. The Counselor Nune is the chairperson. Does that make a report today?
The next meeting.
At the next meeting. That is done. We now go to the next item. Item number 12, petitions, 12.1, claims to property damage. If no other comments or questions on this, need a motion, Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor, through to the council. On 12.1, councilors, I just want to bring your attention to specifically just 12.1. It's always nice to see when people are reaching out and thanking our DPW for all the good work they've done back and forth, but I just thought it was, it's of note to take a look at 12.1, and I just want to say thank you to the commissioner and all of the work that's being done over at DPW.
No other comments? Need a motion to refer to Law Department by Counselor Getchea, second by Counselor Janess, on favor of the I, post in order, I have it, motions carry. 12.2 is National Grid.
Mr. Mayor, can we make a motion to, or can I make a motion to bundle 12.2 through 12.6?
Motion by Counselor Janess to bundle 12.2 through 12.6, second by Counselor Getchea. I'm going to read the main title of them, and if the council wishes, you can make individual remarks on those items. 12.2, National Grid request installation of upgraded underground conduit on McIntyre Street at Middlesex Street. 12.3, National Grid request installation of a new pole and secondary conductor on West Ford Street. 12.4, Boston Gas DPA, National Grid request installation of three vent poles to upgrade gas pressure regulator at 20 Clark Road. 12.5, miscellaneous, Lynda Gas request removal of sticker-only parking signs on Lafayette Street. 12.6, the last one does bundle, 12.6, miscellaneous, Moline, Bonifacio, Penna request removal of handicap sign at 43 Whipple Street. Any comments or questions on any of these line items? Here none. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Janess, on favor of the I, post in order, I have it.
Mr. Mayor, if I just make a notation on those for the National Grid utility petitions, they'll be on for a public hearing on December 19th of 2023.
That is noted. That gives the clerk. On favor of the I, post in order, I have it, motion is carry. That completes the meeting for the night. Any announcements? Any from the councilors? Counselor Mosier?
Tomorrow, there's a Thrives Giving. It's Thrive, it's an organization, and it's going to be at UTEC at 6 o'clock. There'll be a buffet dinner provided by CTI Youth Build. It's Massachusetts Service Alliance Commonwealth Corps. It's a very good organization, and anybody that's interested, it'll be at UTEC at 6 o'clock. It's $75, but it's worth it for the group, and they've been at it for quite some time, providing a good service in the community. So I just thought that if anybody's interested, I will be the master of ceremony. I don't know what I'm doing, but I'll do the best that I can anyway. Thank you.
Any other announcement by the councilors? Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And the final reminder, this Thursday, the menorah lighting is at 4:00 PM right outside here at City Hall. It's going to be a great event. There's a lot going on there from 4:00 PM. And then right after that, we have the culinary celebration, which we've discussed. Once again, this is December 7th. We now have councils, we now have 17 restaurants that are participating. We have free food, starting at 5:30, going till, and we have a DJ playing from 5:30 to 7:00. And at 7:00, we have a band coming out of Boston, Booty Vortex, who's going to be taking on Lowell Memorial Auditorium, very excited about that. But this is an opportunity for all of us to celebrate the holidays, and it's, once again, it's free. However, if you had the opportunity to bring a canned good for the Merrimack Valley Food Bank, but this is an opportunity for the city to thank all of its partners, all of the employees, and all the residents, and what we're really trying to say is, all of the friends of Lowell. So once again, there is no cost. You make a donation to the Merrimack Valley Food Bank, but it's not necessary. So 4 o'clock, the menorah lighting will be right out here, City Hall. There's going to be music and a speaking portion. And then at 5:30 to 7:00 is the culinary celebration, where once again, 17 local restaurants will be giving food away. And then at 7 o'clock, we start the live band. So it's a good opportunity. And the last thing, sorry, I know everyone wants to get out of here. Apologize.[1733.31]